Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of March 27, 2025. This meeting is being conducted in person as well as available via Zoom for people to participate. For the record, the meeting ID on Zoom is 881-4075-2349. I recognize in attendance myself, Joseph Parisi, Catherine Schlichty, Vice Chair, Michael Nyman, Secretary, Peter Canavo, alternate members Ronald Wilson and Axel Ruiz. And I declare we have a quorum. Our first business will be the approval of the minutes of February 27, 2025, which everyone received.
I move approval of the minutes of February 27, 2025. That's presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. I believe since we're all in person, we can just vote A and A. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, minutes are accepted. Our next action is the consent agenda. We have one here, one decision for 13 Hammond Street. And I need a motion to approve the chair signing the decision.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That decision is approved for signature, which I will do tonight. Okay, our first continued applications is the petitioner Kara and Scott Rice seeking a variance from side yard setback pursuant to 3.2.1 to construct a new two-family home at 29 Cliff Road. I believe they represented. There we go. I'll remind everyone, anytime you come up, whether you're going to speak for or against, we need your name and address, the record first, and then you can begin.
John Cunningham, 126.
Yeah, and you got to really, if you don't talk right into the mic, they won't hear it at home.
John Cunningham, 126 Denison Street, Gloucester.
And Brendan O'Donoghue, 17 Milk Street, Essex, Mass.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Eben Creek Architecture. Our clients are looking for relief on a side yard setback. Yeah, it's approximately two feet over the right side setback. The clients' folks, the clients' folks own the property adjacent to the proposed structure. So they, I don't believe they'll have any complaints from their folks. But that's the reason why we're here.
It's, it's not even the whole length of the building. It's just like a corner of the building that's a little bit over the line.
Yeah, the, the lot is fairly rectangular, although the right side setback or the right side property line kind of tapers in. So it clips the back corner of the, of a porch, basically. I think you can see that relatively well on your site plan.
Yeah.
And that would be the reason for the hardship?
Correct.
Due to this tapering of the lot, side boundary?
Yep, so that corner, obviously, we have 10 foot side setbacks here, and that corner is at eight foot, eight and a half, I believe.
Okay, and you're trying to maintain the other side, so that's.
Yep, the other side's no issues there.
Okay, and we did receive a correspondence in support from James Banks and Rosemary Banks. I believe that's your, that's the relatives. Okay, anything else you want to tell us? All righty. You guys can take a seat.
Great, thank you.
We're going to take public testimony. Go ahead. Questions?
Yes, you don't show the amount of lot coverage aft, after this.
Yeah, I can provide you that information right now if you'd like.
Please.
So lot size is 11,753 square feet, and the footprint is 3,129. So the lot coverage at 30% would be 3,525. So we're under that by a couple hundred feet.
Thank you.
Ralph.
Appreciate that. Okay, we'll take public testimony. Is there anyone either in here, in person or in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the application? You're in favor, if you're online, on Zoom, you raise your hand by hitting your raise hand button? Or if you're anyone wishing to speak in favor? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony, no need to rebuttal. Discussion by the board?
Pretty straightforward. I can recognize the hardship there. I don't think they're asking for too much. Nice project.
I agree. It's really kind of a minimal, a minimal variance. Nice, new two-family up there in a nice neighborhood, so I would support this.
I can make the motion.
Okay.
And the petition of Kara and Scott Rice is seeking a variance from side yard setback pursuant to GZO 1.7, 3.2.1 to construct a new two-family house at 29 Cliff Road. I don't see any issue with this project. I recognize the hardship due to tapering of the lot. I think it's a good project. I move in favor.
Second.
Are there motion made and seconded? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Command is approved. We'll we'll get a decision out to, you don't have attorney, right? So we'll, we'll get a decision out to you as soon as possible. Thank you. Our second continued hearing is the petitioner Energy North, Inc. Seeking a variance from lot frontage requirements pursuant to GZO 1.7 and 3.2.3 at 40 Sargent Street.
Good evening, Chair Parisi, members of the board. Thank you for having me here again. I was, before you.
You're going to share?
Yeah, I do, I do want to share, yeah. You want to set me up?
Just want to make sure that's going to work. He's on the participant list, so he, he's over here, you could pull him in here. One sec.
Okay.
We have a rookie at the controls tonight.
I'm no help over here. Well, as, as we wait for this, I was here a month ago remotely seeking the variance to the lot frontage requirements at 40 Sargent Street because there's 20 feet of frontage there when the requirement is 65. And we need to get these, this lot compliant so that we can go to the planning board and combine these lots with an A and R. The A and R is pending before the planning board. They've not yet taken it up. I've been continuing that until we are able to get the relief we need here. And so at last month's hearing, last month's meeting, the board had several questions and some suggestions for us about how to approach this. And so I sent a supplemental in dated March 18. I also provided the board with a copy of the A and R plan that it makes it a little clearer what this looks like. It was, it was very cumbersome with the last plan that you had before you. This is what I would like to share on the screen if I'm able to. But if not, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what sizes you have in front of you.
Before we go any further, I want to go on the record. So the people that were here, heard your initial presentation was myself, Catherine, Michael Nyman, and Ron Wilson has watched the meeting, listened to it, visited the site, and studied all the thing. So the other person that was here is not here tonight, so that will be the four people voting on.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. If you look at the A and R, it's labeled as Exhibit A to our supplement. I wanted to just walk through, starting on the, the far left-hand side, which is the south is the way this is oriented. Okay, here we go.
When you, oh, on like the, starting at like Sargent Street?
Correct, yeah. And I'll zoom in now, I do get the, I have this control now.
Yeah. Yeah, I had to load up my computer, I couldn't.
Great.
Let's meet.
So starting here, you can see where I've zoomed in, this is Sargent Street. This is the public way, this is the frontage because it is the public street. And there is 20 feet along this frontage going into 40 Sargent Street. Then as we follow along this lot line, what would hopefully be the new lot line, we come to this map 32 Lot 18. This is 46 Millet Street, and this is this tiny sliver of land that comes out to Millet Street, which is a private road. And I think that the, there's 29 feet here. This, this, you know, we're not looking to put an entryway here and access, access here. Next is map 32 Lot 22, this is 10 Gale Road. And it has a Gale Road address and has come down here. Gale Road's private, and there's this portion here after these other parcels that are not related to this project. And then the part that I really want to call your attention to is that map 43 Lot 2, this is 18 Gale Road. This is an easement, an easement right that's held by Sargent Street Corporation, which is the seller of this property. It's to their benefit. And so this easement right comes in from Blackburn Circle to Schoolhouse Road, and then from school, it connects from Schoolhouse Road to this property.
Yeah.
And I have a, I included with my packet an aerial to, to help show this, it's oriented a different way, so apologize for that. We're going to change orientation here.
It's a pretty well-built entry into it.
It is, and this is what made the site desirable to my clients because there's this, this, it's partially developed. There's this concrete here, and the easement right, the easement provides a right to maintain it, develop it, put signage up at Schoolhouse Road, of course, with all the conditions that the city would have. And so what we're asking for is the, the variance to the lot frontage at 40 Sargent Street, but also tied to that, a variance to access the property in the event that we get to combine these lots, to access this property from the Schoolhouse Road easement. And then with that, addressing a concern that the board expressed last month, we would suggest or request a condition be that any vehicle that is three axles or more be limited to this northeast access from Schoolhouse Road so that the Sargent Street access would not be used for large trucks, you know, three, three axles or more coming in and out of here. Those would be exclusively from the Schoolhouse Road. And this, you can see how Schoolhouse Road comes right off Blackburn Circle and the highway. And so that's, that's the request that we're, we're asking. And one other, one other issue that we spoke about last month was, was the use and the hesitation or the reluctance of the board to grant a variance without a use. What we're seeking here is, is purely dimensional, and we will be, we need this to go to the planning board to combine the lots. But assuming we get to do all of that, the next step will be to develop a concept plan and a use. And, and that will be a site plan review with the planning board. There'll be a full site plan review with the planning board because this is a general industrial district. And then the, the size of this lot will require it. So, you know, we're not trying to sneak anything through or, or hide the ball or anything. It's just that we have these, this chicken and egg situation where we need certain things to occur now before we can get to purchase the property and then plan our uses on the property. So let me just make sure here. And, and I did review the ordinances, and I didn't see anything that precluded the board from granting variance for dimensional relief not tied to a specific use. And, and I think that, you know, looking at the ways that we are able to access this property, there is a financial hardship that necessitates this variance because without it, it's not a useful site. You know, it's not, it broken up into these parcels without the access that can be used and utilized makes it not desirable. And they, the sellers tried to sell this for, you know, over a decade. And we're, I think we're able to make some movement here. And so we, we think that we meet the requirements there. I'm happy to answer any questions from you now or wait.
So we've, we've been doing some research because obviously we're trying to figure out a way to see this go through, but we keep running into problems. Couple of questions. So this lack of frontage, what we found was a self-inflicted hardship because the property, the frontage was divided in 1967 by the same entity and became 20-foot frontage when it was greater. And typically, you can't defend a variance for a self-imposed hardship. That's one thing we kind of found. Still not sure about why. I mean, this access to 18 Gale Road and then combine the lots becomes the access. I don't. So, and the other thing, you, you talk about some right of ways. I guess, can you move your thing further down? One of the right of ways seems to go right to the storage property that's next door. Do they lose that, or do they not have that right of way?
No, not, no, no right of way is lost.
He goes down.
You want me, I'll go.
To your, to your right, I guess, is what I want to get to.
It's down the side.
Yeah, the property line comes through here and goes up there behind these.
I need you to move your map to the right.
This way?
Front, get to Sargent Street.
Okay, here's Sargent Street down here, here's the entrance.
It's not on our screen, so.
Oh. I don't know where you, I'm not controlling that then.
How about a right arrow?
Oh, here we go, here we go. I was on a different screen there, okay. We, where are we wanting to go?
The storage facility.
The other, to the right. Move your map to the right, I want to see the left end, I want to see Sargent Street end. The other way, your other right.
All the way down to Sargent.
All right, Sargent Street.
Okay, so this map 30, map 33 Lot 4.
Yep.
Okay.
This road of right of way comes right into that. Do they not, do they lose that? Do they have?
Because the 20 feet, see where the heavy line is? That's the property line.
Up here. I'm, there's the storage company.
Yeah.
Who the piece they split off, which created the hardship, looks to me like it has a right to that private way.
To the right that.
This. No, that, there's, they don't have a, there's no right of way there. They don't have an easement there, there's no right of way. This is, this is internal and held by this property owner.
In between there, it says proposed private.
Sorry.
It went on between the lot lines to be removed and read, it says proposed street, private 40-foot wide road. That's going away?
That's going away, that, those, those are all going to collapse once these are.
Was ever.
They'll dismerge with the ownership.
Yeah, yeah, because they're all on, one owner.
Go to the storage unit, okay.
Yeah, and it ends there. I, I think there, there's a line that is a measure, a measurement line, but it's not a continuation of that proposed street or that old way.
Okay, so talk to us about the self-inflicted hardship. I mean, it all is about defending variance in court.
Well, I, I am not familiar with what, with, with that, with the, the division that occurred in 1967 and that that created the, the non-conforming frontage there. But I take this as it is now, and it, it remains a hardship to not be able to go forward with the combination of the lots. But the other thing is that, you know, this frontage has been in existence and in use since 1967, so it's not as if we're moving backwards. It's just recognizing this with a variance to make it formal because this is a, it's now a pre-existing, non-conforming frontage that's.
Right, but the point is it was created by the owner of the property.
I.
Created the hardship, and you, you can't.
That it was created by Sargent Street Corporation?
The Linsky's predecessors in title.
So if the title is changed, then I'm not.
Doesn't make it go away.
I mean, I would have to look more into the, the legal issue of that. But I think that by allowing a variance from a, a location other than the frontage as part of this relief, I think that it resolves that issue because that, that's going to be contingent on us combining the lots, and that's a new issue. That's a new access point, and, and that's the relief that we're requesting. That other variance is just is just dimensional because this, this is already in existence. This isn't to create a new way here, it's just to recognize when this lot becomes combined into one lot, that that is the frontage and that we're limited on what we can, what we can do there.
Now he's saying.
So you, all we were put in our initial application was the variance on Sargent Street. But you're saying it's a two-part, you're asking for a second variance to access the lot from other than its frontage?
I'm asking for.
See that anywhere in my packet from day one.
Well, it is in the supplemental, it's a clarification. I, I did discuss in our first meeting that we intended to use that other access. And when it became clear that there were some issues as we moved forward, and you suggested we consider the Gale Road access, which we already intended to use, I went back and looked and saw that our variance request can be as to the lot frontage and to access from another location in addition to that with the offer of the condition of, of the.
So if we granted you the right to, to access the property from other than its frontage with a condition about three axle trucks? And we need the other entrance for what?
It would just be for light vehicles, yeah. The employees, I don't know whatever, you know, not, not construction vehicles or large vehicles, delivery vehicles.
Okay, well that.
So you can't get an A and R without having a legally compliant law or a variance to take care of those non-formities.
Exactly.
Which Sargent Street is. So my question is, I mean, this is like, what is this 10-acre lot or so, somewhere around that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see this, I mean, the whole reason that entrance exists off of Schoolhouse Road is because for decades, people have been, were talking about giving a legitimate access to the Linsky property with the mind that it's a general industrial lot. I mean, that is a pretty well, I walked down it, got stuck on the lot, I had to walk back up. You know, it's a really well-built entryway made to handle, I suspect, big trucks. And so I, I mean, I'm sitting here wanting to help your applicant get to where they want to go, but I'm hung up on the part of no known use on the property because for variance, I mean, for us, one of the things we have to consider is can we grant this variance without in any way harming the public good? But we don't know, I mean, in my mind, I don't know if, I don't know what the use on the lot is. Now, I'm assuming, I think your, your client's an energy company, right?
Correct.
Presumably, maybe they want to put fuel storage down there or which would be an allowable use on a general industrial lot. But it, it helps, and me, it would help me to condition a variance if I knew what the use was going to be because I know it's limited down there. I don't think you can do housing down there, I think it's under AUL or something, right?
Correct.
So it's kind of a lot of limitations to what you can use it for down there, but.
It'll, it'll be a commercial or industrial use?
Yeah.
I just, the, there's not going to be a harm to the public good by allowing the access because we're, once we take title and actually start to develop plans and find what use might work for us, we're going to be before the planning board for full site plan review. Well, we may be back here for other relief. You know, it's not as if we can go put something on there tomorrow. And it's, it's going to be subject to extensive review by multiple boards.
I mean, can, can we say we'll grant you a variance for frontage, but we won't allow you to use it for frontage? We won't allow you to use it for access to the property? I mean, I, I, you can't go to the planning board and say, can we get a waiver in any way to take care of these issues or?
I, I haven't been before the planning board yet. I've spoken to the planning director and, and, you know, my understanding is that we have to have a compliant new lot that is being created. I mean, I'm happy to, I don't know if you can do this, suggest making it conditioned on review of the use. I mean, we, I'm, I'm, I'm open to finding a way to move it forward. But, you know, we're in this, this, this cycle.
There's a whole bunch of stuff you can do there as a matter of right.
Correct.
Whatever you do about site review, won't allow them to tell you, no, you can't do that. They can only tell you how you do it, the planning board. So it still comes back to this, this possibly some objectionable allowable uses there. And you're asking us to just throw our, we're the gatekeeper right here.
Well, I guess, I guess if we're looking at the potential harm to the public good, it's going to make the site usable, it's going to make it productive, it's going to generate tax revenue, it's going to, it's been vacant and decrepit for decades. It's going to clean it up and make it better. All we're looking for here is less of a use, it's less of a use at Sargent Street. Right now, there's no limitation or restriction on what vehicles go in and out there. So a reduction of the use at Sargent Street and an allowance of a use for trucks at the new entrance. That's all the uses that is before you, and that, and weighing that in the public good. I don't think that there is any harm to the public good to allow a reduction of the potential uses at Sargent Street and limiting industrial vehicles for the northern, you know, the northeast entryway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like that idea of restricting and accessing other than with some limitations, but why don't we?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I'm just having a little trouble understanding the sequencing of the ducks.
Okay.
Here. You're trying to go to the planning board to get permission to combine lots.
Yeah, maybe I should work.
And the pre.
Go ahead.
Well, I might as well ask my stupid question and prove. Well, I might as well ask my stupid question and prove prove it. And you need to have compliant lots before they're combined. Is that? That's the impression I'm getting from you because otherwise you wouldn't be asking for the the variance on Sergeant Street.
Yeah, that's very close. Before we can combine the lots, we have to be able to create a compliant lot when that new lot is made. And so the new lot would not be compliant without a variance at the frontage because the.
And because Gale Road, like they have frontage on Gale Road, but it's not a developed road, so they can't claim that. They'd have to develop Gale Road to be frontage. So now you have Gale Road frontage when you have a big access that was built to access this. I mean, it only accesses this piece of property. Yeah. I mean, I understand the problem. I just, I mean, personally, I just like I'd like to continue you one.
Well, so so we've talked about making contingent approvals. Can we make it contingent on developing out that road? And for that lot? The Gale Street lot?
No, because that won't comply. That won't satisfy the planning.
We have to cure.
Yeah.
The Sergeant Street lot.
Why don't we open the public hearing and see if the public has anything to weigh in? I know last time one of the neighbors was here, didn't get a chance to talk. So is there anyone either here or in the audience online that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? I see no one. Hands raised. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Again, I see no one, so we'll we'll leave this open at this point in case further activity goes on, we'd allow the public to speak again. Okay, so discussion.
Well, I'd like to find a solution to this problem, but I don't feel confident granting a variance at this moment. I mean, I would prefer if we could consult maybe with the planning director about finding a, you know, a solution to this problem that and maybe the answer is you just limit. You put restrictions on the variance. You can't use anything but a two vehicle two axle vehicle to go down Sergeant Street. Of course, that's, you know, policing of which is always the case. But I just, I mean, is there a waiver? Is there some way to do because I don't see the sense in making them develop Gale Road when you have that entrance right beside it.
I'm going to read.
I don't like not having a use declared. I mean, your client bought this wants to buy this property for a reason. They must have some idea what they want to do down there.
Well, they 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 have multiple things they could potentially do with it. But they're not going to put the resources and the time into, you know, planning it out, figuring out what's going to go there unless they know.
We weren't looking for engineered plans of what they were going to do. We were looking for an idea. So one of our furtherers, we were getting some advice from counsel and whatnot. And I'm just going to read a clip out of it. I think the board has to assume that the use of the property will be one of the allowed uses in the G I. And it has the authority, the board has the authority to analyze the variance request as though the use of the property be one that is the most incompatible with residential uses. That way, when the board is applying the criteria, it will not miss anything. Since the applicant won't tell the board what the proposed use is, your hands are tied. So you should use worst case scenario of an allowable use. And is that going to be compatible and in the public good with the residential neighborhood that it abuts? And that's kind of what we've been tossing around in our minds, I think. I can't speak for anybody, but what would be an allowable, and I mentioned it last time, there's a lot of allowable uses down there that those residential homes really aren't compatible with them. Maybe they were forty years ago, seventy years ago, but.
I I understand that that thinking, but I think that it would not be appropriate to deny it based on an assumption that it's the worst use. I think it's okay to think of it in that in those terms, but I think it would probably be an error.
To go, I I would say I have to go with what could legally be done there in the worst case and that the most objectionable allowable use. You're in the G I. You could put a fish D high plant there. You could do a lot of stuff that would be objectionable to the whole city possibly. And you get, like I say, we were the gatekeeper on that, and that's why we always with variances know what's going on.
So the so the solution is for you, for your client to set some parameters of what they're going to do. So I'm I'm saying you don't think it's fair that we do a worst case scenario. Well, we don't think it's fair that you're not telling us what you're going to do with the lot, right? I mean, that's I'm not no attitude here other than that that's a fair response.
No, I I understand that. I understand. I'm just saying I think that if you were to assume it was the worst use and then deny the the request, I think that would be I think that I don't think that would be correct. I think that it's okay for you to say, we don't know, so we, you know, I I understand that, but I think that if you were to assume that that would be getting a line, but I I hear what you're saying. And I can try to find out, you know, it's it's between this and this. I can I can ask and see if I can get that and see if they've gone that far in their thinking.
So I would say in fairness to us, read the room. We're interested in the property.
Yeah, no, I.
We're interested, you know, we're not opposed.
I appreciate the 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 progress that we've made and I want to keep it going. So if we want to, I I would be happy to have it have it continued and I think it's a good idea to rope in the planning director and 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 whatever whatever way you can bring him in here if you have conversations before they I don't know how you need to do it. And I can talk to my client as well as well as potential uses. I I think that one of the issues is also that we don't want to be bound at this point to a particular use. So, you know, we.
But we want to bind you to parameters of a particular use so that we can grant you these variances.
I hear you. I hear you.
And if you change your mind, we want you to come back to us and tell us the use that you really want to do, and then we can decide whether we think it's still in the public good to allow it, right? We're just trying to maintain only the control that we're allowed, no more, no less.
I I I understand and I appreciate that.
Peter, did you have something? Okay.
Michael said what I wanted to say.
So I think, yeah, I did mention at the last meeting, I says, I was surprised you haven't you didn't solicit any feedback from the planning, which would have helped us.
I thought there was a takeaway from the last meeting.
It was, yeah.
But I don't remember who.
We were going to talk to.
Were we going to talk to?
We went to counsel.
Went to counsel, but not the planning.
Really consulted with planning as to get some guidance there.
Oh, why don't we continue? Do you? Twenty fourth, yeah, because we own time. Right. So we would the continuance would be to April twenty fourth. Entertainer motion.
I'm going to make a motion. Move continuance of the petition by Energy North Inc. regarding forty Sergeant Street to our April twenty fourth agenda.
Second.
Question. Need a second?
Executed.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry. I got a hearing.
All in favor?
Aye. Oath. We continue to April twenty.
Thank you. I'll see you next month.
Yep. Okay, last new hearing of the night is the petition of Jerome and Jacqueline Shimataro seeking a special permit pursuant to one point nine and one point eight point three and two point three point one and a variance for front yard setbacks pursuant to one point seven to add an addition that will convert a single family home to a two family dwelling at seven Prairie Winkle Lane. Go to it.
Good evening, Joe Taramina. I'm here representing and working with Jerry at Ten B Riverview Way helping out and representing Jerry and Jackie Shimataro, seven Prairie Winkle Lane. So as you mentioned, we're seeking special permit to convert the one family to a two family and also seeking variances for the front yard setbacks. The goal here or the scope generally is to renovate the existing basement to create a second apartment here so that Jerry and Jackie's daughter can, you know, grow their stay in Gloucester and grow their young family. It's one of those houses where the garage was within the main body of the house. So in order to replace the garage and a lot of lost storage, we're proposing the addition the which is the garage addition on the on the right hand side. That's the twenty by twenty seven addition. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So just a quick technical question. So it looks to me like they need a special permit for the for the front front and a variance for the right front? Right, because they're already in the front, the periwinkle front, right?
So the.
And they're getting further into it, so they would extend that.
Two point three point one, one point eight point three is to alternate span to nonconforming structure.
Are they in the front or are they just touching it?
I'm just looking. They said seven point seventeen point five, not twenty is what it says on the map.
Oh, on the application.
No, right on the right on the site plan. That's the upper floor overhangs. I think on the survey plan, it's that's the ground floor footprint, but then the the first floor, the upper floor, the way you, you know, whichever way you look at it, overhangs towards the street. I just want to make sure if you need a special permit on the front, then we make sure and give it to you. That's all.
Okay.
I mean, if that's if that's how the board votes, just want to make sure. I I thought the special permit mainly was I know you can convert to two family by right, but with changes to the outside.
Change to the exterior.
Changes, yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so it's conversion with changes to the exterior. And the variant.
What is for?
The variance would be for the front yard, which is kind of the right side onto Squam Lane.
Oh, they have two fronts. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So respect to the variances. This is one of those properties where now I grew up on Sunset Hill Road. You know, and we thought that the paved road was the paved road, and I think Jerry and his family were stunned that the property line is halfway into their front lawn. I think in sixty eight, had that been aware or maybe, I mean, I think it predates zone and maybe the house would have been pushed back further. You know, so I guess we're we're looking at that as somewhat of of their reasoning to seek the variance. I think the city at that time, maybe today, we don't think twice of blasting. I think that big boulder was there and they decided they just paved to the left of the boulder. That's really what I think probably happened. Today, it's, you know, get rid of that boulder blasted. So but we feel that the addition will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. And really, the lot shape is the issue. In terms of the special permit, it would allow, you know, a young couple to remain in Gloucester and grow their family. The parking is sufficient, so there won't be any any additional traffic or off street parking. And we feel that the addition is in keeping with the house and the existing neighborhood. Now Jerry has spoken to his neighbors, so I'll let him say a few words.
I'm Jerry Shimataro, live at seven Prairie Winkle Lane. I've talked to the neighbors around and they they all find what we want to do.
Awesome.
Well, you know, I think if if it wasn't for Poles Hill being bought and preserved by the city. Yeah, maybe Squam Lane would have been improved greater, but it's not going to. You know, it's not going anywhere, so it really it's your 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 landscape is out to the pavement and even though it's not yours, it certainly creates more room than than what it looks like on the plan. So I I I think it's good. You've done a good job designing it. Anybody have any questions up front?
Just a comment. I mean, the fact that you have two fronts. Right? If the right hand side was actually a side and not a front, you'd be asking for a two point six instead of twelve point six or whatever he's asking for, significant more. If you moved a ten feet in is what I'm saying.
I just want to ask, you know, touch one base and ask, you know, there's there's ample room to the left of the house in in the envelope. And I feel I have to ask, did you look into expanding in that direction?
So the the grass climbs up on that side. The ground floor is couple feet probably below that grade on that side. And on that side of the house is where most of the plumbing is, so we wanted to kind of locate the kitchen for the new apartment on that side, so hence coming in from the right side. The driveway is on the right hand side. And I guess the main reason is the grade climb, so it'd be, you know, somewhat of excavating out to create that on the on the left hand side.
I can see that.
Thank you.
Right at street level where the you're driving the driveway now.
Thank you. And and I can see that what this does is it actually that the property is centered between your neighbors. You know, you've got the neighbors to the left are
Right on their.
Right on the line and and you look at that distance and then the distance across the other street. You know, it it's even, so it it makes sense to me.
Actually, the addition on the right hand side from the neighbor's house is actually over fifty feet across the street and on the left hand side. If you went twenty feet in that direction, it would be closer to a little bit less than thirty feet actually from that house. So it would be fifty percent closer on the left hand side. So I mean, I looked at it too when I went up there.
Hey, we're going to have public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. If you're online, you hit your H hand button. Join in. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any opposition? Once again, I see none. Be no need for rebuttal. Discussion by the board or motion?
Just one more quick comment. Just when I was up there this afternoon, your neighbor directly across the street drives a little red car. I stopped and she was just coming out of the house and I asked her what she thought about it. And she was all in favor, said the neighbors are all real tight neighborhood up there and they thought it was great what they were doing. So anyway.
Hey, thanks, Michael. Need a motion? Bit of motion.
I would like to move that the petition of Jerome and Jacqueline Sherman Taro seeking permits, it is the permits that are on this.
That's a permit.
I'm going to have to withdraw my motion. Let somebody else do it.
Do not have the listening.
It's not clear. Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. On the petitioners, on the petition of Jerome and Jacqueline Shimataro seeking the special permit to convert a single family home to a double, I mean, to a two family home with exterior changes and a variance for front yard setbacks to enable the petitioner to add to add an addition and convert to two families. I would, I think the applicants demonstrated a hardship and justification for building on the right side of the house, and I don't think a two family is going to be substantially more detrimental than what exists in that neighborhood. So I would move approval of this application.
I would like to second that excellently worded motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you all set? We'll get a decision out.
Which one do I want to write? Oh, I'll to I'll to Cliff Road.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I do recycle, but it's one left. I have to recycle.
Is the chair interested in closing the meeting?
I'm first wondering if anyone has anything they'd like to add or bring up. We welcome on. Welcome our newest member here.
Yes, here, here.
Alec, we're glad you're here, and as, what I want you to know, then you have the right to, even if, even if we had a full board and you weren't voting, as Ron has demonstrated, you have a right to ask questions.
Thank you, that is good to know.
So don't be afraid, and if you wanted to go out and look at properties with one of us someday, feel free, contact someone, we could always do that, or if there's one you're not sure about, we call each other once in a while. As long as it's just one-on-one, you can't deliberate with a forum about a subject, so we have to be cautious of that, but outside of the meeting, you know. All right, so, anybody has anything else? Anybody, April 10 and April 24? So 24 will be the Linsky continuance Sergeant Street. And the 10, you all have packets?
I don't, yeah.
If you have them here, so don't forget your packet.
I expect I'll be able to attend both meetings.
You will. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned officially.